I could start off with being there about seven o'clock.
Yes, that's good.
Okay, being seven o'clock, I'll bring the Dunbar and Selective Meeting Director at 7:00 PM on August 8th. Gentlemen, we have some old business from a previous meeting that I was not at. Do you need to...
I'd like to make a motion, Justin, these are the minutes that we made on July 19th. I'd like to make a motion that we prove the minutes as written for July 19th, 2024.
Were they amended?
No.
Okay.
I'll second that, but it does say as amended.
It does?
It does on our...
Draw it, okay.
I stand corrected. I'll make the, I'll re-sign the motion. I'll make a motion to approve the special minute, meeting minutes of July 19th, 2024 as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? I don't think there's any discussion here.
No, I don't see where, the next one down says amended.
Those were amended.
Right here, snapshot of me and especially the minutes as amended.
Mike, you made a small change in that.
Ah, yes, yeah, I, the change was by me, if I recall.
Yeah, it was not said, that's right.
All right, motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we go for summary of the case. I'm going to abstain. I have a second set of meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 25th, 2024 as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
And that one you weren't at, right, Justin?
Oh.
Is that correct?
Yep.
So, Justin, you'll be abstaining from signing on those? I guess. Let's keep them in that file. Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment for anybody in the... You're on the agenda, John?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing no public comment for now, we'll do our town business. We have on the agenda tonight Donna Dunn from the Dunbar and Historical Awareness, and we have an update on Cipio Page dedication. Okay.
Okay. I have a couple things to show you. I did not print up multiple copies because you can see it uses a tremendous amount of black ink. But this is hot off the press. This is the official invitation that the Trail, if you pass it down, will be sending to invite elected officials, the governor, the senator, who's reps and that stuff. That's the first blast of invitations that go out. They generally do not show up, but they generally send a letter to be read. But who knows, it's an election year, we don't know who the actual show up, okay? The next thing that we have to put together is a, an actual invitation, no, a press release, which I'll be working on, and I run everything by Fred and Lee, the person that keeps our English proper and our Ts crossed and our Is done. And then we can start working on press releases. We'll probably send out save the dates before we do the press releases, because I want to get those closer to the date of the actual event. The other thing we'll have to work on, this is Exeter's program, okay? So they take the artwork from the piece and put it here. And we did desperately try to find some black soldiers, a black militia and stuff. It just was impossible. We, it just was impossible. So we used his gravestone at the Trail's suggestion. We're gonna be very careful, we're gonna try very hard to get the acknowledgement, acknowledgements to all the proper people. You either want to thank everybody or thank nobody. And then, this is their schedule. Ours is going to be very similar. I think what we'll be doing is Dave and I will make a quick introduction. And during that, he will mention that there are no bathrooms at the cemetery, but there is, there are some at the store, and there are some at the library. This will be open at the time, because this is gonna be on a Saturday at 10:00 in the morning. They try to structure it for half an hour, but we've been to a few of them. Lee and Fred, Andy and I have been to a few of them. They really do run more like 45 minutes. And there is no seating. We are not gonna fool around with chairs. We don't want to be responsible for them sinking into the ground. It's gonna be bring your own seating or stand there. The Trail doesn't have a problem with that. They had mostly people standing at the other events we went to. There was minimal seating. And we just can't have people, if they can bring their own chair, it's great, and we will have that in the invites.
Dedicated committee member for photography?
I have not done that. That's the other reason we're here.
Because you're thinking you're gonna want some pictures.
You got it, thank you. And then, right after that, Dave will be probably four minutes or so. But I think the most important thing is the bathrooms.
Four minutes?
Five minutes, I was giving you five. You're gonna keep turning. Is there anything else important you should say, housekeeping wise?
I don't think so. They're just gonna do the general introductions, right?
Right. And then, next, Jerian Bogus from the Trail will speak. I don't know what she's gonna say, but I'm sure, I'm sure it's just gonna be very inclusive of, you know, Trail is happy to get into all the history and have different communities reaching out to them as far as coming up with people that lived in the town that nobody knew anything about. About five minutes or 10 minutes after that, I will make some quick history remarks as to how we built this project very quickly. And Fred, Fred and I like to talk, so we're gonna, we're gonna be timing each other.
I, there's someone in the dial behind you.
I know, no, no, no. And after I get in, into that end of it, then Fred is going to be presenting the military material. And he's already got his, all his book there, and everything he's gonna say is highlighted in yellow. He said five minutes, he's timed himself, but now he's got extra information he discovered, so he wants six whole minutes. So, he might get that. Then after that, if there are any letters from public officials, they will be read. It will probably be someone from the Trail reading them. And then they will have the actual unveiling of the marker. Now, since we've been careful the cemetery trustee several times, this is going to happen, you know where Cipio's buried, is it in the far northeast corner, right? Well, you guys know, of course, you were muscling that big stone in the ground. We're gonna have several pop-up tents in the event of rain. We use something over our speaker. We're gonna have some displays. We've got some boards we're putting together. But they, we don't want everybody trooping over to the marker. It's been suggested that we use like surveyors tape or something, and we make a path over to the marker and a path out.
So that's trampling all the cemetery?
Exactly. So, people are very respectful with the graves. So we're gonna stay over in the area that has very few, if any, graves, and have our pop-ups there.
And does, I mean, are the speeches there, and then...
Right. The people are just, there's gonna be a table and a podium.
Okay.
And the people will speak at that. And I think most of the, the people will be standing and are sitting on their own chairs, kind of over towards the Smiths. You know what else I'm talking about? And then, the actual unveiling, the ones we've seen, they like to keep it rather simple. That'll be Jerian Bogus, the executive director. And I have asked Jane Wescombe, who is actually a descendant of Baddas, whose family married into Cipio's family. And she was, hmm, she was very helpful to us in our research. There may be another person that should be in on that threesome, but this is not gonna be all of us traipsing up to unveil. There'll be a sheet over the stone, it'll be courted off, and then they'll take it and they'll be unveiling. And then, after that, we have, people can go look at it. But we're going to have a fiddler. Let me explain. Fidd, using fiddles was a way, a good number of black people back then made money. It was small, it was portable. Cipio himself was not a fiddler, but we had two black fiddlers living in Dunbar at that time. One was quite well-known, the other we discovered quite by accident. And there are songs, Fred and Lee did some research, that were in vogue in the late 17, early 1800s, that are very much appropriate. I would like if the world were perfect to find a black fiddler, and I spent a ton of time on it. I contacted New England Fiddlers Association, New Hampshire Fiddlers Association, I was all over the place. I did track down this Jake Blount, Blunt, who is actually probably one of the best premier black fiddlers in the country, but he's not gonna traipse out here for one or two songs. So, I have a gal that actually, Ken River hooked me up with, who is part Native American. Not black, she says, I can't give you any black heritage, but I can give you Native American heritage, we'll take it. Any diversity is great. And she said that she will come and play for us, so she's gonna play a couple of clip songs. And behind her, I have a picture that, when Laura Tucker died, she, she had only sold us part of the Hadley Tucker collection. We bought a part of it. She kept all the rest of it, and before she died, she gave every single bit of it to me. And in that collection, I have a picture of a black fiddler, a person of color, that's not identified, but it's about 1850-ish. So I'm gonna have that blown up. It could be the child or the protege of one of the fiddlers that lived in this town. There's a reason it was in Alice's stuff, because it was her, most probably, OP Wilson, her great-grandfather, that took that boat in his studio over there. So I'm gonna have that blown up, because that was, that was, that was a moneymaker. They would have performed at the events in town.
Make sure the fiddler's on the program too.
Absolutely, and I've got her name, absolutely. And then, as a quick follow-up to that, with no marching in or anything, the Sons of, the New Hampshire Sons of the American Revolution Color Guard are going to hear the three volley musket stage. And the American Legion Post 116 will be standing at, at attention. There's not gonna be any, you gotta keep everything very, very, very tight. So, the SAR said, we'll do whatever you want. They're gonna bring their flag, but they're going to bring the Betsy Ross version of the flag, which would have been appropriate at the time. And instead of their dress gear, they're going to wear their militia gear. Because Cipio was the commander of a militia from four towns. Captain. Glad you didn't correct me. Captain of a militia.
I wasn't allowed to talk yet.
Yeah. We are gonna have a refreshment table, and I think it was Lee or Fred that came up with the idea. When Cipio lived in Foyt, New Hampshire, he made his living at one time. He had land, we don't know whether he owned it or rented, he did pay taxes. But he made a living at one time baking baked goods, and bringing them to town meetings and town events and selling them. Probably meat pastries, but we can't do that. This is gonna be the morning. But there's such a thing called an election cake that used to be made back then, and we know they had gingerbread. So we'll go, we have very simple refreshments, but very small portions of things that Cipio would have probably made at the time.
It's watermelon seed, huh?
Caulule or rum too?
I'd love to. We spike the lemonade. Coffee, tea, water, lemonade, and pastries, paper plates, napkins, that kind of stuff. We do have pop-up tents. The Sons of the American Revolution have a sound system. Fred has a table and a podium.
I would just be concerned by inclement weather, because you don't want to postpone it, it just...
You can't postpone it.
I know, but it's supposed to be aggressive with inclement weather plans.
Exactly. You know, you gotta do what you gotta do. I have talked to the chief, and he said he will have someone there. But I want to talk to him about that, because you're gonna have traffic coming from two directions, and the parking's gonna be kind of tricky. There's areas we're gonna have to cordon off for people to stand and, or put their chairs. But he said he will have someone meet with me before, so we can talk about where people are gonna park. They're obviously gonna have to do some parking on 13th. There's just no way around it. But, I'm just thinking is, who's retired, oh, you know who my help was? Which police officer just retired?
Gorman.
Gorman. I wonder if he would, no, okay. All right, well, I'll, I'll talk to the chief, he may have some suggestions.
Chief will, if we have to have someone over there, we can have someone there.
When we first started this whole project, two, two and a half years ago, we were told by the Trail that they did not want any other town events piggybacked on their event. They are now open to that. As a matter of fact, welcome other entities to get involved. The cemetery trustees, Judy Keefe in particular, is going to open the Hearst House. She's gonna take the map that I made and some of the books I've brought over to the library, and she's going to host it. So after the ceremony, people can take a look at the Hearst House. We also extended the same invitation to the Sorcerers Society to open their buildings. I haven't heard from them yet, but, and roadside towns, and I'll, I'll do the, the press and stuff. It's my understanding there's no more signs at Page's Corner anymore.
Correct.
That's okay.
The only thing I'd recommend is somewhere in the, in the dialogue, the speech, that you talk about the other things that are open.
Oh, we would, at the very end, that's the closing. And it, it will say that right on the program.
Okay, great.
I think I passed the program around.
Do you want it back, or is...
Yeah, I do want them back, because they're all, they're all I have. But basically, it says at the end of the program that after the ceremony, attendees are invited to tour, blah, 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 blah.
Whatever is open?
Yes, whatever is, whatever is open, if in fact there's things still open. Okay, so, talk to me, what else have you got for concerns? The photographer was a great idea.
Is someone dedicated to, yeah, you could...
Yeah, absolutely.
Because everyone's gonna have their, their little cell phones, but you want somebody you can rely on.
Yep, yep. What do you think? Any safety concerns anybody has? Street numbers are going up. The Page's Cemetery is now 339. We had to have something for the impatience. And Lee jumped on it, and got John Wigan in, in like 48 hours, we have a street number.
I would just coordinate closely with the police department for the parking situation.
Absolutely.
That's probably key.
Okay.
I think it's just gonna be the traffic that's the only concern, it's just, as you said, the parking.
Two offices would be, one at one end and one at the other end.
The only thing is, our chief should be very, very appreciative of what needs to be on. I just think you just gotta liaise on them.
Okay. Anything else? I'll, I'll keep you updated, and Fred and I or someone will keep you updated.
Announcements ahead of time, make sure Lee will post the, appropriate, the bulletin board here, webpage.
I have a question for you, Donna. Have you been to any of these dedications? So you've got to observe how things went, if it went well, and you can...
The one in Exmoor is literally on the street.
Big crowd?
About 150 for us in Exmoor.
125 according to the area.
Wow, that could be big in the corner there.
Yeah. So I'm going to, when our paperwork goes out, it's gonna be bring your own chair, limited parking, please carpool.
You guys understand though, that town's got a lot more population than it used to.
They picked up with traffic as they were going. And, but the one in Warren, they had so many people there, they had buses to take the people on the tour afterwards, and the different sites. It's getting to be a big thing, and I'm going to go to the one in September, I forget where it is.
Manchester.
It's in Manchester. It's for the mill workers, the black mill workers, and the various people that live there. So I'm gonna go into that one to see if there's anything new that pops up that we can emulate.
I don't think you have any problem, the police department support you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would suggest that you close the north gate to Center Cemetery, to the Page's Cemetery, and have all the traffic come in from the south side. That way, they're all pointing out, and then open the north gate when it's over with, so everybody can get out, but that way you...
Pressure's going that way.
The two, two gravel roads there and everything else, you've got plenty of parking, you know.
Make it one-way.
And then, the VIPs will be able to park in that far north lot there. There's parking there that...
Sounds to me like you have your parking director.
Yeah. I'm gonna let the chief take care of that.
Yeah.
And we will probably mark off, we're, we're probably gonna have three, maybe four pop-ups. I know the Trail's bringing one.
But by the Hearst, it's kind of empty. You can do it right on the side of the Hearst, right?
Yeah, there, there are those stretches of grass. The problem is, it's like one grave right there, and we kind of gotta work around it, so. Luckily, most of the grassy area there is fairly open.
And I know the numbers are going on the north end, so you may want to leave the north end open, because that's where we're putting the numbers. Because that's where there's most of it.
Yes, right, it depends on where you put the...
And leave the south, yeah.
Right.
And leave the south end closed if you're gonna do what directional traffic.
And we could, if we're gonna have people going in one end, we could say people entrance, or, you know, human entrance, or whatever.
Walking, you know?
Yeah. We could put temporary signs up that say, enter here, cars here, please park here, and...
Okay.
I, I would say, because my ideas on the table now, let the chief run with them.
Yep.
Fred, you had something else?
Yeah, well, we met at Donna's house, you, me, my wife and Donna. We talked about putting the flag at the entrance that we want people to drive in. I get a three-by-five Betsy Ross flag I'm gonna put there. So, kind of tell them, okay. But like Donna says, maybe close the north gate up temporarily, you know? But that's what we had planned for them to come in that way.
Yep, the, the other thing too, they're gonna be standing up there on that end of it. I think it'd be wise to have that, that gate closed, because that's where you're gonna have most of your people speaking.
I just don't want, there's some graves that are flagged. I want people like walking over to Smith's grave and stuff like that, so I think we need...
We may have to put a temporary...
We're here to sign that day on the south gate.
I think surveyors tape, we're gonna have to put...
Temple and take it down afterwards.
Boy, I didn't mean to go over the grave. Oh, my tire just went in the ground.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, it's, we're gonna have to have people watching for that, there's no question about it.
Yeah, I get that.
If we're gonna have a lot of traffic there, you might talk to some of the people across the street that might have a field or something where people can park.
I have done that. I have, I've started that.
Set up signs for that.
Yep, I've, I've started, I've started doing that already. And I want, I'm gonna talk to the Smiths, well, it's the Smith's son that has the house now, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just gonna let them know there's gonna be a lot of traffic there, and we'll try to have a...
If anything, that will create some very goodwill among the people.
Absolutely, absolutely. All, all of the abutis will be notified, no question.
Yeah, let me know if you need me, I can get a hold of Roger.
Actually, if you want to, go right ahead.
Okay, I'll do that. What was the date on it again, October?
Saturday, October 19th.
October 19th.
Time?
It's gonna start at 10:00 in the morning.
10:00 AM, in about 45 minutes.
About 45 minutes, yep.
It's raining, it's raining 29 minutes.
29 minutes, it's raining. Speakers will be under a small tent, so they'll be protected.
No, the thing is, the sound system is non-electrical, is non-when, when plug-in type, I see both of these.
Fred, do you have a sound system you're using there?
No, 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 the SAR does.
Sons of the American Revolution are bringing the portable one.
Like the one they use on here?
Yeah.
Fred, do we know if they need plug-in power?
What's that?
No, they didn't.
They didn't?
Good.
Okay. The Smiths have always been very good in the past about, when we had things going on at Hearst House, letting us run long electrical cords over to their barn, so. Anything else?
I think that's it, thank you for the update.
No problem.
Thank you for the hard work in the committee.
Just so you know, I put the appointment for your historical awareness person next.
Is that the subject?
Ah, no, same subject. I have a drone, and I can take aerial photos of things there if you'd like. Video and stills.
Okay. We're not gonna turn that down.
If it's okay with the Selective.
Long John can shut down.
Sure.
I think that we kind of need to see that on chill night news.
Sure we're gonna shut it down or that?
How long's the battery lasting?
Maybe both.
Next item on the agenda?
Couple of those.
We have a recommended appointment?
Yes.
Probably have a.
Okay. Who wants to read, read the appointment, Justin? This is for the recommended appointment for the Dunbar and Historical Awareness Committee?
I make a motion to appoint Sandra Mannion, a member of the Historical Awareness Committee, with a term ending March 2027.
I'll second Justin's motion.
Good question, I just want to make sure the committee's recommending her.
It is.
Thank you.
All, all motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have an Old Home Day committee meeting update, and a floor reservation request for a thinking on desk. Come on up, gentlemen.
Gentlemen, come.
Oh, easy. All right, why don't you guys start off and give us the update of the Old Home Day? Okay.
We are pretty well, pretty well booked. We have a, and we, 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 we are laying out stuff on the common map here, you know? And we, the parade will be on a different route. It'll, it'll, it'll be starting down at the school rather than down at Hornet Hill Road.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, we can receive input from, from various, the police and a few others saying that, that there's a problem having it down there, so.
So where are you gonna start from?
Gonna start from the L, Mid, 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 Mid East Hall front. And here's a map from the, if, if you'd like to see it.
Okay, so instead of watching the parade come down like we always have, it's gonna come up this way.
Right, and loop around, pass down the offices here, and end up back at Robert Rogers.
You're kidding me?
So we're gonna participate just a little bit?
Catch each other by the time they come around?
I have no idea how many people are gonna participate.
Well, uh, 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 there, there's a lot of folks in the parade who, who will also be on the commons, so they can, they can come, 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 uh, come around and go to their site.
I don't think you're understanding, like, when that comes down through here with the fire trucks, and the tractors, and everything else.
Yeah.
There's way too much to come around here and come and dead-end there. The whole thing's gonna stop.
Right, they...
It has to go by up the road.
The plan is that whoever is, is not going to be parking, locating on the common will keep, keep, keep going on 13th. The, 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 the police, police vehicles for, for, for example, can, 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 can go north on 13th, turn down Barnet, Barnet Hill, come up, out here, and across to the fire station.
I just, I just want some serious thought for that, because you got a whole bunch of people driving.
Yeah.
They're gonna show up that morning.
Yeah.
And it's gonna come to this intersection, they're not gonna know where they're going. What is it, somebody's standing, you go straight, you can turn. You follow me? Because it's gonna be all kinds of kids running around there trying to get candy.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna have some turning this way and some going straight.
Correct.
I think you guys should rethink that.
It's too late.
Do you think this was a recommendation by the police department?
Yes.
It's not too late to not have them come through here again.
Just take them up 13th.
Take them up 13th. You don't have enough room here to start hauling people back in with people that are gonna want to stand here.
Well, the tractors and the antique cars are gonna park over here, right across from the office, on the, on the lawn there. So that's gonna take care of quite a few vehicles. And that, you know, there's, the horses, they're, they're gonna be...
Follow me, follow my train of thought now. When you have them normally coming down 13th, all the people are over there watching them. And they'll come in the backside, there's no people over here. Now, if you're gonna be coming around this way here, that's all gonna be full of people. And you're gonna be trying to come through them.
Well, in the past, they've come down 13th, and then they, Robert Rogers to School Street, and then back around, and that... You know, we didn't have too much of a backup with that either. So, I think that, you know, it should, it should work out. You know, it's one of these things, you know, let's try it, if it doesn't work, then go to Plan B next year. But, this is the way it's set up, and behind the school, that's where all the staging area is gonna be, down to that lower parking lot. And they'll come out there, and so, the fire trucks, you know, they could be in front of the fire department, and then when we come by the tail end, where they can hop on the ride behind us. So, you know, it, I like the old route myself, but, you know.
But there, there were issues, issues with the amount of time 13th was blocked. And it, that the police, police, police got, 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 re, found out that that could, could, could be an issue with the state and whatnot.
It happens with every time. Donna DeWesley closes down for two hours, and they go up there.
Yeah, well, we basically worked with the input we got. And this worked out to be the most work, workable. And, and if people are, are going to have trouble getting in here and around and whatnot, they can, they can, they, they, they can go on down the street, and somewhere there, turn, 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 or turn around and come back, you know?
You're missing what I'm saying. You got people coming in trying to back up, turn around... You're missing what I'm saying. You got people coming in trying to back up, turn around while this is all going on because they're not gonna know where they're going.
Oh, uh, 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 we, we will be directing them.
And by the time you get back around to that side, you're gonna have too many vehicles to keep going.
Well, I think if, if the, you know, older cars are planning to try and park while the parade's still going on, it's just gonna be a mess right here.
I do too. And the tractors while the parade's still going on? I don't know, I think you guys gotta rethink that.
The, 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 uh, the, uh, tractors and the cars and those, those will, 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 all, all be parked mostly on the, uh, on the lawn. The horses will be there too. In, in the past, we, we had those, had those, those vehicles.
Right, after the parade you're talking.
Right at, yes, right at.
So that's what Justin says, you're gonna have horses, antique cars and.
Tractors.
And tractors all trying to park here on the lawn where you got people standing, watching the parade all at the same time.
Most of the people stand on the, uh.
Thirteenth side.
On Thirteenth side.
Yeah, so, 'cause they were always looking up that way waiting for it to come down, now they're gonna be over here waiting for it to come this way, you know? I don't know, it's just, uh.
I, I also recommend considering, like, you see how we have cars parked in our parking lot here?
Yeah.
If you're gonna use some of that space or anticipate using that space, people aren't gonna, you're gonna have to mark it off so it's reserved for the, for the parade.
They do that.
We, we always make about four or five of the spaces handicap for additional handicap because we lose the one up, uh, the library. And so those will be handicap spaces and all the vendors, we want them to park down at the town garage. And, you know, like we did during Arts on the Common and that, you know.
So now, um, your staging is down there, down the school parking lot.
Right.
Which, where are these people that are here in the town parking now?
Yeah, the, the vendors will, and we've got over thirty pay cash vendors.
You missed me, you got, so you got vendors parking?
Vendors parking will be down at the town garage.
Town garage, and a lot of the people that are in the town, you have parked down at the school.
Yeah, they, well, uh, I don't know, with the staging there, where they're gonna park.
That's what I'm talking about, I don't think this was thought through.
Oh, it, uh, that was, uh, thought of, the, the i- i- idea was, you know, there's, there's a loop at the, at the school, the, the.
The front park what?
The, the what?
The front park what, the very one in the very front loop?
Well, well, not, no, no, there's.
No, the bigger loop going all the way back.
That goes around the back of the school.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and so, um, vehicles, vehicles will, will enter this end of it, you know, you know.
By the police department, go around the back.
Yeah, it's still creating quite a traffic jam, that's what I think we're trying to articulate.
Well, you gotta remember, most of, a lot of the, uh, things in the parade are self-propelled, so the people aren't gonna be parking a second car or anything like that there. So, uh, you know, we, we're gonna have floats, you know, with the garden club and four-H or whatever, there's gonna be a few of those and, uh, but it.
But did you guys have a meeting with the chief and discuss this?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you're working, President Todd, well, I'm waiting us to wait now.
The problem we ran onto, uh, with the, the route was that they wouldn't stop traffic. And kids, you know, and they wouldn't let us come out into a lane until fifteen minutes before the, the parade. And these cars are zipping by, you know, uh, because they didn't close it down at Winslow Road. And so there's a, there's a safety factor there. The people on Barnard Hill Road, why, they didn't like everybody parking on their road either. So I mean, you know, we're damned if we do, damned if we don't, you know, type of thing, and so, uh, this is an alternative right now. Maybe it'll work out fine, maybe we're gonna have a traffic jam with them come around School Street and Robert Rogers, you know, because the, they're still going on. But, uh, we're gonna have to find that out.
Yeah, the, the, uh.
Well, like I told you, they should have, no issue closing Thirteenth down for a period of time 'cause we're talking less than a half an hour. You go to New Wausau and that place, they shut the whole road down right through the center of town.
We talked last year about it, shutting Barnard Hill down to stage all on that so there was no issue. And then they shut the road down and then they can come out off of Barnard Hill and go down Thirteenth.
Well, that was how it was done some years back, but, but the people who lived out on Barnard Hill did not like the parade blocking their road for, for that, that whole, whole distance. They, uh, that meant, meant lining up on Thirteenth only, not down Barnard Hill Road. That was a change that, that had to be made and, um.
Why, could somebody like it?
What?
Could somebody like it?
Uh, the, the, uh, residents down on Barnard Hill Road did not like the lineup happening on their road.
For three minutes?
I never heard anything about it.
Yeah, last year we started, uh, basically at Ken's, uh.
Who got the complaints about that?
No, police chief probably.
Yeah, and, and us, yeah.
But police chief's gone? He's gonna be here Monday.
But we started the parade at Ken's garage, or barn, when it's fallen down, you know, so that we're, we're further down the route because otherwise there's nobody on either side except maybe two or three people.
Right.
And that, so that helped stretch it out and we were able to, you know, pull out onto the, the road there. And then, uh, we had a few floats on Barnard Hill Road and then the tractors and stuff like that, the fire department were all behind that on, on the side of the road on Thirteenth. But the problem we had was with Mike Gorman, who was in charge of it, and he refused to stop traffic. And, you know, we butt heads with him every year, but he's no longer in charge, uh, uh, but, you know, they changed the route, but that was, that was part of it.
We should have had a meeting with the police and the selectmen and everybody, go to Iron Oak, we didn't realize this was changing like this. I think you're gonna have some serious issues the way you're doing it.
I think that, that there was some input from the town, but I don't remember who. We did not do it directly, directly, but the, uh, the, uh.
Chief, is it too late to consider changes to the route?
Yeah.
Is.
We've already posted.
Is a permit required from the state to, to stop the traffic?
So I think that, 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 I don't think we need to discuss it further, we can't do it at this point, because I think.
This is the permit with, with the picture and the fine print.
I just wanna make sure you have good coordination with Pete, the, you gotta, we gotta go.
Oh, yes, yes.
I'm lost, you gotta have a lot of people looking.
Traffic, I know.
Yeah, exactly.
How long ago did you have to fill that, do you keep permit out?
Um.
Is it a week in advance or two weeks in advance or?
Well, well, the, it, the report was, uh, 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 made, uh, on, uh, uh, uh.
Twenty-fourth July.
Does anybody know when that has to be into them?
But, uh, I think the chief did it, uh, early July.
Yeah.
Late June.
Yeah.
I can't hear me.
Yeah, so.
When's, when does it have to be into the state to have the alter moved or any of that?
I don't remember the a, a exact date, but, but, but the, the chief, chief said, we, we have to go ahead and get this, get this set up now so that by, by July middle or whatever, we, we can get the per- permit done. Because the permit goes, goes into the government and then it takes.
Well, Thirteenth is actually gonna be closed too here for a little bit.
Yeah, it has to be, yeah.
So the thing is, if, if it's a modification of Thirteenth permits, it's pushing it further down if they make a change, a little small change to the route. I, the thing is, we don't have to wait on the chief, I think tomorrow we have the sergeant who's very familiar with this, I believe.
Tyler, Tyler's in, in charge.
Yeah, and, 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 and one of the items on here says, "Traffic on the state highway shall not be delayed more than ten minutes." So that, 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 that also, coming, coming down that way delayed the truck traffic much, much longer. And that was one of the issues that, that kind of forced, forced the discussion of.
Also telling New Wausau, getting through that, every year they do it. The parade's a lot larger than ours and it's closed down for hour.
Yeah, well, I don't know, I'm, I'm.
Thinking that nobody from the state ever checks every time.
Is it, you think it's worthwhile?
I think, Mike, your little liaison, why don't you go and work on, let us know how it works.
See, the thing is, my question is, uh, do, what's the opinion of the committee? Would you rather have it the way we had it before on Barnard Hill?
My opinion is yes, but, uh, I'm just one voter.
I understood.
I think the whole flow works better myself.
I'll see if, uh, if we can amend the, uh, app, the, and I think it's, it's not gonna be more than ten minutes, how we say.
It's plain to them what we, our thoughts are, 'cause everybody's gonna be looking at this as it comes around. And this road is normally full of people because they're going up around like that. And that whole roadway's full of people.
Right.
Now they're gonna be sitting here waiting for this to come out, like they always have, and then you're gonna have people, you know, three groups trying to come in here to park. And the rest of mine.
What kind of, uh, groups you talking about here?
You just told me the horses, the antique cars.
Oh, yeah, that, that, that is all on this side here, yeah.
I think they usually.
Yeah, but they're not turning to come down here, John, they're gonna go in the parade out front here and they're gonna turn in this entryway.
They usually have some horses that block those two entrances so that people don't come in.
Yeah.
The parking area, and then that would allow a little bit of time for these three groups to pull in.
They're, they're.
Yeah, everybody's gonna be right behind them.
I thought the fire truck ambulance are all gonna go straight.
Um, they.
But what about the people walking and everything else behind them?
They can, um, people who are walking and whatnot can, can, can just come around the corner, get on the grass and walk to their place. Their space.
So the whole life of the parade's gonna be just this little corner?
Yes.
They're starting on the police department entrance into the ball field, behind the school, up through the parking.
I know, but the parking they're gonna view is just this little, come.
Just a little section, yeah, it's gonna be a short section viewing.
Yeah, but, 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 but there can be people on, on, on that, 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 that short, uh, stretch from the police, 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 police department up, up to the, up to the common and whatnot for candy and all that stuff.
No, there's no room there. It's right by Hodgman's house.
No, standing.
I know, there's no room there.
Especially with two ways of traffic, it's gonna.
The police always close that lane down if you, if you look at it, so there's no parking right there.
Yeah.
Or the police.
Right.
I don't know, I think that better, you better work on that point.
There, there will be no, uh, uh, parking during, during the parade on, uh, 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 Robert Rogers.
The whole day, there's no parking right there, so people can walk 'cause they parked it.
Yes.
Or, or, says per police right on the signs there.
And the parade will be over by, what, ten fifteen, ten twenty?
Yeah.
And that's how we're looking at maybe twenty minutes of parade, and then that whole area there will be open up for parking. You know, the upper lot will be also, so.
At school, you mean?
At the school, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they need parking to watch the parade, that's.
Yeah.
You know, when you have a parade like that, people are coming in to park, they're coming ten, fifteen minutes before it, right? Gonna park and they're gonna be rushing up here, they're gonna be trying to park over there, you guys are gonna be trying to set up.
Parade, yeah.
When it was set up over here, and you know this, John, 'cause you like the route better.
Yeah.
The parade, all the activities is getting put together up there, and people trying to park there and walk and run with their kids to get over here and see it.
Well, we.
And now you're putting them all in the same area, it's.
Parking in, in, in the rain.
We, we, uh, I adopted this be, 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 because, because we, we had a, a lot of strong input about the coming down this way and whatnot.
Well, the thing is, uh, what was not closed last year was it, uh, the, for the diversion of the traffic for the thirty minutes?
At Winslow Road, they didn't shut the through traffic off.
That's.
Where it could've been detoured down Winslow and then up.
Into Mansion.
Yeah.
Manson, you know, so that, that was, uh, that was the big thing. And then, and, uh, Gorman just refused to do it, usually they'd bring a police car across or something like that and block it and have them go, that's, that's the most.
That should've been brought in front of the select board, we would've worked with the police department, get a better station.
And for some reason I thought that, that the police spoke to the town, but not sure.
Yeah, but that's happened the last two years.
Yeah.
Uh, Tom Casano's.
I didn't realize that was going on.
Yeah, Tom Casano's gonna be in charge of the parade and then so, uh, he's done the Christmas parade in Concord and stuff like this. So he's used to getting it organized, but the big problem he had when he was up here at the top of the hill is that Mike Gorman, you know, had his own rules and, you know, we couldn't stop traffic. We had a lot of little kids and stuff like that, uh, you know, playing, you know, grab games and whatever, and, uh, you know, it was dangerous.
Right. Okay, well, let's move on, Mike.
I'm gonna just, uh, see if we can return to the original route if we can at all.
And, uh, just let us know.
Yeah.
Let Lean know by phone, she can let us know, email or phone. We're gonna leave it at that because we're too late in the point by now and.
So Sergeant, um, was it we were working with?
Tyler, Sergeant Tyler, it's gonna be, uh, our party poison.
Okay.
And, and the, the, uh, rest of the info, um, I don't know exactly what, what else.
You can see the entertainment there.
I, um, I have a couple of other things to bring up with you guys.
Yeah.
Um, and looking at this, um, reservation for the second floor, like we did last year with the pies.
Right.
That seemed to work pretty smoothly, and again, we're trying to keep as many people out of the building to, uh, go to the bathroom outside as possible. And so I asked Lean to look up the request for the, um, for the porta-potties. And last year, we made sure we had a handicap one, and then you have the other ones that were individual, and this year we don't have a handicap one.
Ri- right, a- and we, we, somebody had, had given us, given us access, access to the, 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 uh.
Do you remember being here last year, John?
Yeah.
We specifically asked as a select board to have a handicap bathroom outside to limit the use of there. And now, come this year, it's gone.
I don't know where the person who ordered that got it from exactly, but, but he, he, he had input that the, um, that the bed, 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 bathroom over there for, for handicap, handicap was the best. Were a couple of, uh, recent, one of course, of course, but, but, but the other is with, with the handicap all the way over there. Someone who's on, on, on the far side of the common has to go all the way over there.
Wheelchair.
And I didn't tell you where to put them, I mean, if you put them up in the center, wherever you guys decide you wanna put them. But we'd asked for it to be done last year, and now it's not being done. I don't, I didn't get asked, did either of you two get asked?
Wow, I don't recall that, yeah.
So.
But part of the problem is, is.
And as far as payment goes, we've always stated that we would help pay for the.
Yes.
Additional clothes, we paid for them for several years.
Yeah.
I don't actually think you needed any help last year, but we did offer for it. But I'd like to see that back out there because we're trying to limit the amount of people running in and out of the building if possible.
Problem is, we don't have central sewer here, we have a subject system, okay?
Yeah.
And they just, we have one system that supports this building and that building, if for reason, if for any reason that goes down, that means these offices have to be shut down and the town business comes to a screeching halt, and that's the problem I feel. It's not, it's not a matter of cleanliness, someone using it, it's just a matter of, uh, you know, if someone goes in there and just, for whatever reason, clogs it up. And the thing is, it not only backs up there, but it backs up this building and we're all, um, in trouble.
And we didn't, you know, we didn't schedule it to ask for any additional cleaning right after the Old Home Day or anything like that.
And we did, we did have incidents in the past where this facility, this office was actually broken, and the thing is, I think Lean, you had to call someone in the following day just to get it repaired so she could be operational, you know, and that, that, that's our concern. And that was, that, I mean, it's a simple concern, that, we're trying to be respectful, the, the employees have to work here and then you, someone comes up to register to the car the following day, oh, sorry, we're closed.
I'm not saying if somebody's in there, that somebody's like, hey, you gotta get out of there. I'm just saying we should have a facility outside here so that the majority of the people are using that.
We've got a meeting, uh, next Wednesday and we'll go ahead and, uh, put that on the agenda.
Right.
And, uh, we'll order it and.
If you guys find you're short on money and you need money, let Lean know and we'll process the work we always do.
Yeah.
And I should have, and I should have a, this, we should have a readout on the parade route change, if it's gonna be one. At this point, I would say go forward with no change to the route, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna do some work tomorrow.
Yeah.
To see if we can, uh, improve the route. Um, I agree with you, John, I think lining up on Barnard Hill for like twenty minutes. Um, I agree with you, John, I think lining up on Bernard Hill for like twenty minutes is not gonna hurt anybody.
Well, that's the way we feel about it, but you know, I can say.
And I think is, I think that's what the input we got.
And and I didn't hear any of that input, so.
Yeah.
If you get input that's changing something, in the lot, so we know.
Okay, gotcha.
Um, as far as where the placement of the um porta potties, if you're hearing complaints that they're all the way over here.
Yeah.
Maybe you need to put them in the center parking lot somewhere. I mean, they're fairly clean, they're they don't smell bad because they're all just got delivered.
I mean, you could put them up on this end of the library parking lot or something, do that affects their.
And that's kinda central instead of at the burlesque end.
We've got food stands inside, we got a barbecue and stuff like that. That's how come having them right over here, where we've always had them, is the best place, that way, you know, there's no.
I I I agree with John, I think this the place seems like it was fine.
Yeah, and people know that's where they're at, you know.
Yeah.
But uh.
John, I agree with you.
You know, we're gonna have a public building open, and, you know, some people may come in and use the bathroom. We can't stop it because it is a public building, you know, but.
Yeah.
You know, we're gonna give them alternatives with porta potties.
Again, last year, yeah, and that's what we want, we want the alternative, so we're not gonna run in and holler at somebody if they use it. But if we find an issue with it, whether, you know, the thing is getting clogged up or it's left a a mess, we're not gonna allow the pie contest in there next year. You know, and that's what we tried in that one last year, it worked fine.
Yeah, it did.
So, you know, we'd like to be able to let you use that again.
The ladies, the ladies are the ones that do not like to use porta potties.
Yeah.
And that and.
Believe me, none of us like using them, but it is what it is.
Well, yeah. And the other issue is that that actual like like maybe is that the um the budget so far, it is all a bit.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Plus, we've got nine hundred and somewhat dollars or six hundred and ninety dollars or something like that with thirty paid vendors.
Right.
And there's it'd be thirty plus actually, because we've got a couple more coming in.
Yeah.
So.
And there will there will there there could be a couple who just don't show up, but you know, it's it's not a.
But if we got their money, the refunds.
Well, some of them pay when they arrive, too.
What about the climate weather, any any climate weather, if it's pouring rain, what are you gonna do for the parade, eh? Are they canceled or no?
Show goes on, we don't have a rain day.
Okay, what about cancellations for refunds for the exhibitors if the.
Uh, most of them have pop-up tents and that, so.
Just 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 making sure.
We have rain one year and they still came.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I seen one year, you go, did give refunds if you had to.
And even with arts on the common and that, when we had rain, we usually have one good day and one bad day. You know, just about every year, but sales were uh uh just about equal on the on the rainy day, so.
Yeah, and and.
And you expect expect the ending end time to be around uh three o'clock, three thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys good with um the use of the second floor again this year?
Um, I I have no problems, it was, last year was was out of bed.
I could. You got that, Lean? Okay.
Next year.
But what I don't wanna see is a line, as you said, a line of like fifteen, twenty young ladies wanting to use a restroom in there because that's the wrong, that's the wrong message we're sent, what I wanna send with you.
Yeah.
I think it's uh, it's one thing for uh, it just, it's not gonna, it's not the spirit we want.
We will not advertise that the restrooms are available and that.
That's all I guess.
In that way.
I remember when you guys were gonna say that.
Yeah. And that, um, next year, what we'd like to do, the band that's gonna be playing Endless Skies. They play sixties, seventies, you know, fifties music.
Uh-huh.
And that, to have a sock hop upstairs in the in the town hall. And that uh, we should have all the acoustics fixed and everything else, but that would be like at four o'clock, four to six or something like that, so.
I think I I think it may be challenging, because I usually think about four o'clock, it's sliding down big time.
Yeah, oh, yeah, they used to have fireworks and stuff like that, and they had them parked in there.
Can I just ask one question, are you still expecting the selectmen to scoop?
Oh, haven't yet.
I don't think anyone's asked or.
Well, while we're sitting right here.
Yeah.
I think we're there, we'll be able to do it, yeah. Mike, you know where you had again?
Of course.
Like how.
It's better better than here.
We did.
We're gonna have uh cakes and cupcakes, and that to go along with it also, like we did last year.
Okay.
I don't know if you've got any more entries in, uh, Lean?
Thank you, guys, I've gotta keep the meeting moving because we got some people coming on the agenda. Thank you guys for coming in.
Yeah. Um, so what we wanna do now about the route and all that?
You guys work with Mike, Mike's gonna work on that tomorrow.
I'll have a decision.
We'll hit the mailbox tomorrow.
Yeah.
I dropped them off at the post office today, so.
Okay.
Uh, everybody in town will know about what's going on.
Okay.
We'll uh, I'll have a decision probably tomorrow, the thing is, I just wanna get the logistics busy, the thing is, we just can't close thirteen by ourselves, so it's gotta be done with the state. And we just wanna make sure that we have blessings from the state, and if we can count, that's the one.
Uh uh uh, do you do you uh want the co- copy of the permit that that exists now?
Um, does does Sean Tyler have it, have a copy of it?
He does, and I I have it electronically as well.
I'll I'll be fine.
Oh, all right.
Because he'll be, I'll be working on it a little more.
Sorry, didn't have it in there yet.
No?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming in.
And Zewall on the seventeenth.
Okay.
Start working those arms out, you know.
Yes. All right, I'm gonna review some bid proposals for the new heating, um, and A C system in the police.
We got all three in?
Fire department.
All three come in?
Um, we got two, because the third one didn't do the type of heating and cooling system, did we?
Okay, great.
Dunbar and Fuel. I'm gonna give you a little update, um, because I met with the different vendors going over there. We had a notice from Dunbar and Fuel that they were gonna replace the existing three-ton unit, that'll be a little background, with a five-ton unit.
Right.
With a heat pump on top, and then the condenser outside. And um, we had that after they did the original proposal, just replacing the system. Um, and in looking at it with the second vendor, which was Brookside Mechanical. Um, the third vendor opted out because they don't do the heat pump systems. Um, Brookside Mechanical said that the ductwork was too small to go to a five-ton unit. The condenser would ice over because you're trying to put too much into too small a trunks.
Okay.
And he showed me the um duct chart to use, and um it was even oversized for a four-ton unit. So that being said, he said the best direction, he thinks, is replace that furnace on its own. And um, put a separate unit in for doing the fire department all on its own, which would.
Rather than rather than expanding the.
That would provide heat and A C. And um, he sized out, you know, he did a three-ton unit and replaced that unit there alone. Another thing that Brookside said is because that's in an open garage area, realistically, when you're changing from existing and bumping that up, that unit should be enclosed and the ductwork should be enclosed. So that being said, just replacing the existing unit as it was would be a more beneficial thing. So, he put a ton and a half, which was eighteen eighteen watt in the um police station, um, I'm sorry, in the fire department, new room that they wanted to add. And um, so he put a ton and a half there and three tons, basically four and a half ton. And um, he thought that was sufficient. Lean told me that Dunbar and Fuel thought that the ton and a half unit would be too small for the fire. So I called him up to get a better reference on what his thoughts were. And he said, if we go from a ton and a half to a two-ton unit over there, and adds two hundred dollars to his price. Which is a no-brainer, but he said the reason he felt it was because of the size of the area. You've got the garage bays that are already heated for the trucks, you've got the police department that's heated this bay. So really, you'll have two exterior walls, the other two, it's not like a building's sitting out on its own. So the square footage, he says, already has conditioned space on two sides, so he's, he was more than comfortable that the ton and a half was more than enough. And he says it's the same way when you look at the A C, the police department's A C'd, and the other side of that building in the garages, there's no sunlight hitting it. So, he thought being uh right in the center of the existing building, there, the ton and a half was more than enough. But he said it would be two hundred, so that being said, um, Lean and I are calling.
His quotes are in the envelope.
Yeah.
Brookside's inside.
So Lean and I called Dunbar and Fuel, those are all, don't get confused. And we we made sure that they were sizing systems out that were the same. We had apples and oranges, we had a second one, they were apples and oranges. So now they're um, they're both uh inclusive. So, I haven't seen these yet, so looking at Dunbar and Fuel. Uh, this is the police station one.
He actually com- combined the two on the one sheet, and I had asked them for a separate.
Right here.
Is that it? Does it have an and written on something?
Yeah, um. So contractor hereby submits the following specifications, police station, install new hybrid heating and cooling system to include oil-fired direct vent hot air furnace, Bosch three-ton. He says police station, yep, so that is the police station side. Three-ton heat pump condenser to match Bass Bosch coil, and new two-stage heating and single-stage cooling thermostat. Uh, fire station, install a twenty-four K, so that's a two-ton, single-handed mini-split system, meeting area for heating and cooling. All required electrical work is to be done by a licensed electrician.
Which is.
So we put total cost was twenty-four, which was seventeen for the police department, and seventy-five hundred for this.
Correct.
What is this one here, is the old one?
Nope, that's just a signature page, except. That's. He put both on one quote.
Yeah. Okay, so that's his total quote is twenty-four, give one to you and I'll give you the other one. This is Brookside's new one.
He gave two different ones.
Brookside coil and Brookside quote.
Yeah.
Okay. So Brookside. Remove oil-fired furnace coil condenser and power vent. Install Granbury Comfort oil-fired high-boy furnace direct vent. And uh, a relo burner, a three-ton A C coil, three-turn universal heat pump, high-efficiency air cleaner. Reinstall the light, set up and test your warranty, price does not include high line voltage. That price is sixteen-five. And again, Lean shared specifications, but no pricing provided vendor. Both these vendors have done work for the town of Dunbar, and so we felt comfortable with these guys. This one here says, we hereby furnish and install materials and labor, install L G red series heating and air conditioning system at eighteen Robert Rogers Road. Below you will find a list of work to be done. Supply and install um an eighteen thousand B T U, which is a ton and a half supply. Supply and install one red eighteen thousand B T U indoor unit. Startup test, one-year warranty, price does not include line voltage. The installation cost will go to work, not include any extras, we'll purchase the sum for six thousand. So, here's the other one, I'll put that one to Justin.
Not much. They're doing a brief proposal right now, and they just have to make a motion.
I don't know if I can remember the first one. Justin, can you tell me for the, tell me what the um, I'm gonna put Brookside here. And then I'm gonna put Dunbar and Fuel. Um, Brookside for the police.
Sixteen-five.
Sixteen-five.
Dunbar and Fuel was seventeen thirty-one, seventeen thousand thirty-one dollars.
Seventeen oh thirty-one?
Yeah.
Okay, and what about the um?
Fire department was seventy-five hundred for Dunbar and Fuel.
Seventy-five hundred?
I don't have the uh.
Right, 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 right hand, right hand. Oh, this is Dunbar and Fuel, where you're writing it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here it is, Justin, it's six thousand.
What's what is meant by uh my ignorance, what is lo- no line, this is the last item, it says no line, what does that mean?
He's he's not providing the electricity.
Is the other one providing the electricity? I thought he was, so one does not include electrical work, so that almost evens it out.
God, I think this John said it included, right?
Right.
Yes.
Yep. All electrical work is included and done by a licensed electrician. I hope that that'd make it pretty darn close.
It'd make it real very close.
Let me just add them up to see what we're looking at, sixteen-five hundred. What, six thousand?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-two five hundred. Seventeen-two oh thirty-one.
And is this a smaller unit for Brookside?
Yeah, they would be two hundred dollars more, those had that two hundred, and right now it'd be.
So that'll be sixty-two hundred?
So it'd be, yeah, so it'd be twenty-two seven. With two tons. I'll put down here, two tons. Thirty-one oh seven plus seventy-five hundred is twenty-four five thirty-one. So. Minus twenty-two seven hundred. Yes, so there's eighteen hundred and thirty-one dollar difference. I would think you could get that heat up pretty quickly with what they do that you have.
And who has to provide, do we have this electrical contract, does that mean we have to go and get our our electrician company?
We would normally hire.
Irish.
Hire Irish.
Irish, because they did the panel right before.
Um, my thoughts, I, the thing is, I think I don't mind keeping the business in Dunbar into Dunbar Company.
Yeah.
Um, I think Brookside is a respectable company, I would rely upon them, however, I like the all inclusive price. And I think is, I think it's a wash, and I think is, the only thing that I see the main difference is uh. When's Dunbar, when's Dunbar, when's Manchester?
Yeah. I think uh Brookside's done work for us before in this building, and I think Dunbar's done all the buildings before, so. I would be good with using Dunbar and Fuel, because it's so close and the electrical's included, I'm pretty sure you would eat that amount of.
Oh, easily, easily.
So, I'll make a motion to accept both bids from Dunbar and Fuel.
And when will the work commence?
I did not ask.
I don't think there's any schedule on either one of these. They have some part-time um A C units in the.
Oh, I know, they, we absolutely, it's not, it's not.
In the wall, so we're we're okay for now. Um, so I I'll make a motion that we accept the uh bid from Dunbar and Fuel dated seven twenty-two twenty-four for a total of twenty-four five thirty-one for both sides of the building, the police and the fire.
I'll second that.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Is it Justin?
Yeah, that's it.
I'm gonna put them back in the folder.
Do you want to handle it?
I'm gonna just throw them. I'll go bring my mic. Okay, Lean?
You got the sign yet?
Um, we'll let the time finish. Okay, so that's been taken care of.
You know, for those in the audience, I know you're waiting on other stuff, we we are no, last week was like, there was no one here, we went right through everything.
This is fine, this is what democracy is all about.
Okay.
It's slow, it goes through all the stuff.
Okay.
I I haven't, I haven't been in court, and been at the end of the motions list, if I can't be first at nine in the morning, I'm there till twelve.
Okay, just just I'm sensitive to all you here, we're all sensitive. Okay, just, just uh, I'm sensitive to all you here, we're all sensitive.
We've got the next thing on our agenda is review the right-to-know policy. We did sign that right-to-know policy, you signed the second part of it.
Lean, that was when you adopted?
No, no, this is actually um.
No, I didn't.
I did forward this to electronically so that you could look at it in detail, the uh, we had. Uh, paid our attorney to draft up a right-to-know policy so that every department could be utilizing the same format, and then it would um, answer. The question that many of us have had in the last three or four months, to how do we handle out the state.
Correct.
Right-to-know, so. Uh, we tweaked their policy that didn't apply to the town.
Okay.
I got the input from the police chief, um, it reads very nicely, very easy to follow, and it would be distributed to every department head. And um, give us guidelines to be able to address.
And hopefully make, take workload off ridiculous requests.
That's correct, yep, yep. This is ninety-one A? Yeah.
We need to sign this, I would say.
Um. Yeah.
And, and for the, for the public, can I, Dave, can I talk for this?
Yep, go ahead.
For, for the public, we were getting out-of-state requests that were doing fishing expeditions for where and how we buy anything from materials to anything from contract. And these are from kind of, from Florida Midwest, and they're just fishing expeditions looking for um, information so they can bid on processes.
They were basically every purchase that your tenant made. Throughout the entire year.
And they wanted going back several years, and so uh. It was busy work, and put more bur- administrative burden on our staff.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. To um, approve and sign the town of Dunbar right-to-know policy per R S A ninety-one dash A. That's been developed by our town administrator and our police chief.
Who aren't down at the beginning, so it's.
To help the town. My abilities, motion's been made.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lean, thank you for getting that done.
I'll do that and pile off you, Justin. Okay, next thing on the agenda, we have a hiring action at the transfer station. Patrick Baum and I, the uh, supervisor of the transfer station, and I met with this person. This guy um, came to us, um, and he's probably, I think only the second guy that I've met since I've been hiring people down there. Um, he has a class A C D L license, so meaning the big rigs, it's above a class B. And um. He isn't available on weekends per se, he said he would come in an emergency with us, but he's got his class A, he's comfortable driving the truck. Um, he said he can do all of our deliveries, um, two days a week. Woody is good with that, he also has backhoe, um, he's a little rusty, somebody has backhoe experience, so he'll be able to crush the cans down while Woody's on vacation. And um. So we thought he was a great fit because even though he wouldn't be a management-type person, he is a guy with a class A C D L license. So we can pay him for that job with the license, he only wants to work two days a week, which would be sixteen hours. It fits in perfect with our needs.
Yep.
And perfect with his needs.
Gives Woody great.
An additional person there. So, Woody and I made the suggestion to um, to hire him, I asked lean to set a physical up with him this Monday, which she did. And because Woody's on vacation next week, um, we asked him to do the pre-orientation paperwork this week as well.
I think Woody was on, remember them already?
Yes, so we did all the pre-or, um.
Orientation.
Orientation paperwork, and he's not gonna come in till after Woody's back from vacation. So, the motion is on there to hire Steven Bartlett. Who now provides out of where, to be at our transfer station, and he will be the C D L um, level. And the pay rate on level one that we talked about was twenty-one ninety-six.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
He said step ones?
It is.
Aye, no fair, no, no arguments.
Yep, and he has all kinds of experience, but I said, we'd, I'd like to start your step one, so you have six steps to go up through. And uh, it will. Oh, I thought I did. Follow in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hope you attach this to that. There you go. Okay, so that's it for the transfer station. We have an email from our um, building and zoning administrator, Donna. For some direction with the issue on building permits for lots on a class six or private road. Um, we did adopt that policy earlier, she was looking for direction, Justin needed to sign it today, which he did do. And uh, we're gonna go ahead and provide them with the proper package and startup, and what, my thoughts, are you guys have any differences?
No, it's a, it's a, it's a long process, but the thing is, if he's willing to go through it, and there's no guarantee, say he's gonna uh, pass muster and be able to do it. But there's a, there's a whole list of, he's gotta go through a whole list of boards, and boards have to give input from the police department to the planning board.
Yep.
Which I have no, that's how we wanted it.
Yep. There you go, Justin.
So one of the big questions that Donna had was um, should she use the building permit that she issued out for um, regular building permits?
Sh- I would think the regular building permit attached to it.
With this.
Yeah.
Because it's very clear as to the policies, the requirements, applications of the board, factors the board has to consider. And then on section three, um, D E N F, it's require input from the planning board, fire chief and road agent, so there is a. Two things a person will have to follow up with, but to have this in place, we're getting a lot of inquiries, only in this one week, I've got three inquiries, people who want to build. On a private road, or get permission to get the town to take over a private road.
Well, lean, I would say, I, I would say it is a lengthy process, it's gonna, I think it's gonna take several, a couple, at least two months get through, because you gotta go through. Road agent, planning board, police and fire review, before even touches us, and then we have to have a public hearing, so it's gonna, it's gonna be a lengthy process. But there is a process to be followed.
Correct, so.
So I think Donna's big thing is she had some couple on private roads coming up and what to do with those.
Yep, yep.
So we'll follow that procedure. Jeff, the road agent just showed up for the record, do you have anything about that?
I heard a little bit about it.
We signed it, we signed and adopted the policies and procedures for. Private roads and that, and Donna wanted, if we wanted to start one, we're telling her yes, we did.
She had asked me about a driveway permit for a residence on Blueberry Trail, which is a private road.
Yeah.
I C O, we don't. We don't typically, the highway department doesn't issue permits by the sound of classified road or anything. So, she was unsure, she said she was gonna talk to lean about it.
Yep.
Come up with a game plan, so I do know a little bit about it, but that's all I know.
But these are, these are decisions that could be in.
Yeah, seeing how what came to light in the last couple months, talking to the attorneys. And the policy we'd adopted.
It's working.
You're freezing?
Yeah.
Freezing.
Put some weight back, not as fine as anything. All right, that being said, we're gonna go off to the mailbox item. I'm gonna try and go down through these uh. We've got some stuff on the other agenda still. Okay. A conservation easement has been passed uh, through Five Rivers to the land property up the road here, for the back half. And uh, that has all gone through, Five Rivers and the Conservation Commission, so. Just an update for us to keep this uh, it did go through, so we're all set with that, which is a great thing for the town to have that land. Backed up. Okay. We got an update from the police chief, um, as far as the dog warrants. Uh, they did some good legwork, and they uh, they reduced it down from forty-six dogs to only three that need to be served for civil forfeiture, for forfeiture. They thank Linda Marco for all her hard work on the project. So, I was in agreement with him, sending back a note by email, said I'm glad that they got it down to three poor dogs. So, that's been taken care of.
I'm gonna say the price.
Yeah, I'll hold the, yeah.
Yeah, I'll hold the price. We did get a price from um, Woody Baum, from Baum, from our transfer station. Um, he got a quote from Harris paving, to saw cut three areas of the parking lot that were busted up badly. Remove the asphalt, reinstall new gravel, and do two inches of base and then a. An inch and a half top coat over the whole thing. We're not gonna give the price out, cause we're waiting for some other price to come in, and I didn't see that he had called your guy to request, so I wanna make sure that gets done as well.
Well, he'd already got one last year.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
And I'm not even sure, looking at it today, I'm not even sure it's something we're gonna do this year, we're gonna probably keep that to the end of our agenda, which would be building maintenance. And if we have enough, then we decide to.
Incom-.
Incom- or, or do it.
Or do it, yeah.
I mean.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Another way of doing it is if you want. Pete and I to get involved, then we could saw cut it, remove the asphalt, add the gr- gravel, and then have our pavement contract, could work up pavement under our.
That's what I always think would be the most.
Yeah, I mean, we could do it.
Could you come up some, some price proposals that would?
Yeah, Woody had shown me the paperwork from last year, he had reached out to the salesman from Advance, that had came over and measured everything up and. And uh, he gave him a price, it was pretty extensive, I remember he showed it to you guys.
Yeah.
It was a lot of money, so I said something to the owner about it. Uh, they, it's a whole different ballgame when you get involved in that, because they send their crew over, you know, it's a foreman, a couple truck drivers, it's, it's a different rate for that type of work. Whereas when they pay for us, we get everything ready, they show up and they pave it, so it's a, it's a little, it's.
Cheaper.
It's a, yeah, it's a little cheaper, because they're based it on, on paved roads, and we do all that preparation stuff. And a lot of that is in-house, because Pete's our employee anyway, so he's working for us, and the town truck's the town truck, so there's no bill for that, so. Yeah, it's a costly, but it's, it's direct a lot less.
Yeah, so.
So I could talk with Woody about that if he'd like it, something.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
I was gonna offer that up to him, cause I heard he was looking for somebody to pave it again.
And he said some companies not even show up.
Yeah.
And he got this one, he seemed to wanna jump on it, and I said, you know, I'm not gonna do that.
Yeah, I.
Tying a guy.
Yeah, it's up to you guys, if you wanna do it.
Yeah, just keep his out next week, so wait until the following week.
Yeah, that's fine. All right, thank you, Jeff. Okay, going on to the public comment, cause we do have a non-public tonight, any public comment?
No.
Anybody, Jeff, you have any from?
I do have an issue, I want some guidance with.
Bring it up.
All right. I'll move up to the front. We had a uh, a situation with some pretty severe road damage to the asphalt on Zachary Drive. That's a new section of Zachary Drive that Bob Pike uh, developed. And two years ago, got it approved, and put the final coat of asphalt on it last summer. So this is brand-new road, you know, everything. And the guys, when they came to do this work, where the gentleman up there, they really tore the pavement up badly. In fact, I've never seen anybody have that much disregard for what went up there, it was, it, sometimes you get some incidental damage, but this was pretty bad.
So it wasn't the developer, it was another lot that they sold?
Yeah, it wasn't the developer, he had sold a lot to an individual, and the individual happens to own a house in the development, and they're gonna build a house for an in-laws. And he's kinda being his own general contractor. So after I got rid of it, I went up and looked at it, and it was pretty bad, so I got ahold of a pavement guy to find out the best course of action to repair it, because. You know, again, it's a brand-new road, it's not like one of these old ones, it's already twisted and rolled and, you know, you just patch the asphalt, so. The game plan, the best way to do it would be bring a milling machine in and grind a section of it off, take that inch and a half top coat off, down to the base and repave it. Both lanes, so it's an area of about a hundred and twenty feet long by twenty-four feet wide, and then it would be brand-new, just like the rest of the road. It would have a seam in it, but that's just the way it is. And so I met with the owner today, that's in charge of the project, Nick, Nick Griffiths, absolute gentleman. I couldn't ask for a nicer guy to deal with, and I told him, Donna had helped me with it, we reached out to him and told him I wanted to set up a meeting with him. I went and set up a meeting with him, no problem, I'm gonna pay the tab, the tab's eleven, uh, ten thousand four hundred dollars to do this repair. So it was significant, no questions asked, doesn't have any problem with it. I told him I was reaching out to him, cause I felt he was in charge of the project, I wasn't gonna try to chase down his site guy. He said there were like three different people involved that did the damage, and you know. He's, has no problem with paying for it. The problem is, and it's not a problem, I recommended we don't do it till they're done doing the site work.
You meant you just.
You know, you, you wouldn't wanna do it, we wouldn't wanna rush out there and do it now and then have the same thing happen again, cause I, so. Having said that, I don't know if his timeline is gonna have the heavy stuff done by the time paving season ends, so it might go into next spring. Again, he said he's willing to pay for it, he's even willing to pay for it now, but I don't know how we can do that, how the town can do that, can you accept like a bond or something?
And hold it or not?
That's why I told him I'd find out.
I would, I would think that we can, the attorney wants to help us, I think.
My suggestion is a letter of credit.
Letter of credit?
That's what you guys, that's what towns do when uh, their new roads, when a development is, and the new roads being put in, is that you get the developer.
Yeah, we do, typically we get bond from a.
Or a bond, letter of credit, something that's posted with the town, that they can take it when they need it.
Do you have any option really?
Yeah, I would think so, uh, Jeff, because I. You know, something could happen to him, or, you know.
Well, that's what I told.
Heaven forbid, it'd be nice to get it.
That's exactly what I told him, he took it very well, like I said, absolute gentleman, accepting full responsibility, doesn't want any issues, loves living in town.
That's a good part about it.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, this, it wasn't an argument at all, and uh, I told him that you people met tonight, and I'd come up and bounce it off him, find out which direction we're gonna go, cause he was on board with waiting to.
True, I think it's.
You know, that would just be silly.
Most times.
Yeah, and uh, you know, it, we've got a price, I can, I uh, advanced, sent me a tax with a number and the price, so I can have him write up a formal proposal for it. So we got that for the record. And yeah, I don't, letter of credit, cash, something cash or whatever, we do have um. One hold on the project, cause they're gonna build a house, they've already got a building permit, eventually they're gonna wanna see all this stuff. But this guy lives in town, he's his own general contractor, it's not like a out-of-town entity that we gotta chase or anything, so.
Yeah, and I think we can actually put it in the subject to keep it if he wants to pay.
Yeah, the treasure holes.
Yeah, but I just wanted to run it by you guys, there's no problem with doing it, I'm happy with that, cause that's what I told him, I said, well, we really have a way to do it.
Do you wanna request a little buffer and then refund him the money if there's?
No, I would say, advance, they've been pretty good to you, I think they would even commit to it.
Yeah, I'll ask for that, yeah, I don't think it's gonna.
Change that much.
Change significantly.
It's not a big enough piece for them to change.
I don't think so, I'll ask him for sure.
Are you gonna get a quote to write?
Yeah, I'll get a quote, a regular proposal for him.
Right.
Cause I, I just asked him, we came up with a plan, which was the best course of action, on how to repair it the best way. And I said, give me an idea what it costs, so he figured it out on piece paper, took a picture of it, and sent it to me, just so I'd have it to talk to him.
For discussion, yeah.
And like I said, absolute gentleman, couldn't ask for it.
Thank you for being proactive and protecting our room.
Yep, and so, we've, we've come up with a solution, and it's good for both parties, and we don't have to chase the other contractors, he's gonna be responsible for it.
I'd say just work with lean and make it happen, all right, thank you.
Fine, I'll tell him that.
Okay, anything else, Jeff?
Nope, that was just that.
It came across the road, looks good.
Yeah, it's coming along. Be out of there shortly.
Yeah, it looks nice and high.
Well, does that much get washed out tomorrow?
Uh. I don't think that'll be a problem.
It'll be other places, that might be a problem.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Okay.
I'd like to make a meeting, we go, I'd make a motion, we go to non-public for R S A ninety-one dash Alfred.
Yep.
It's paragraph eight.
I'll talk to you later.
It's a paragraph three, paragraph two C, request of the town tax collector.
I'll second. Okay, second motion. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Commence E S.
Null, yes.
J, null, yes.
Okay.
What time?
I'll tell you the time right here.
Eight twenty-nine.
No, eight twenty-nine.
Thank you.
That clock is just, it's right on, I guess. Okay, so Fred, we won't be able to record this.
See you, Fred.
We're gonna need a couple minute break for Fred to.
Did you bring anything on the board for the session, something really wasn't?